Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Order of business for December 8th, 2020. This is the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. It is a virtual meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Yes, just a friendly reminder to state your city, township, or county and the state where you are present. Dave Abdallah.
Dearborn Heights, Michigan here.
Bill Bazey.
Dearborn Heights, Michigan here.
Robert Coniston.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Hanky, Michigan.
Ray Muscat.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here, I'm in Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please be seated. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Ray Muscat.
I move that council approve the agenda for December 8th as outlined.
Court.
Court.
Court by Councilman Abdallah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I have a question on Agenda Item Number 12A. I mean, should we just remove that? Because I'm defamatory to one of the, you know, former councilwoman. And she's not the one, I mean, that, there's no base to it. You know, I checked it. I mean, she's not claiming to be the Chief of Staff like somebody else. So I don't know why, we didn't request it on the council, and I don't know who's paying for that.
We can address it when we get to 12A. Because I don't, there's no action on that anyways. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Pardon?
I say no.
Okay, let's do a roll call on that. Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Coniston.
Yes.
Councilman Bazey.
No.
Councilman Abdallah.
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel. Next, we have Council Chairwoman Malinowski Maxwell nominations for City Council appointment, where the oath of office will be administered immediately following the appointment. I would like to say on Monday, December 7th, 2020, we had the pleasure of meeting with the prospective City Council candidates to fill...
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Still can't hear you, you're muted.
Council Chair, you're muted. I didn't know how to, I don't know how that happened. Okay, on Monday, December 7th, 2020, we had the pleasure of meeting with the prospective City Council candidates to fill the unexpired term of City Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make most...
Okay, I'm not done, Councilman, I'm not done. At this time, I am requesting your honorable body nominate all of the candidates that were interviewed. This is how we did it back in 2007, 2009, and 2012, when we replaced City Council people. So I am asking all the candidates to be nominated. That would include Zohair Abdalhak, Moby Dune, Nancy Brier, and William, also known as Toby Zarenko.
Support.
Okay, would somebody like to make the motion to...
Support. To Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that City Council nominate all of the candidates that interviewed at our special meeting on December 7th, 2020, as outlined in 3A.
Support.
Court by Councilman Coniston. At this time, I will take a roll call and ask the individual council members who they are nominating. Councilman Muscat.
I nominate Zohair Abdalhak.
Councilman Coniston.
I nominate Moby Dune.
Councilman Bazey.
I nominate Mr. Abdalhak.
Councilman Abdallah.
I nominate Moby Dune.
Councilman Wenzel.
Are we nominating or voting?
We are voting. Who are you voting for?
Voting for Abdulhak.
I am going for Moby Dune. So at this time, we have three and three. I'm going to take the vote one more time. If it comes up the same way, we will have to adjourn this to another meeting. So at this time, I will go through one more time. Councilman Muscat.
Zohair Abdalhak.
Councilman Coniston.
Moby Dune.
Councilman Bazey.
Mr. Abdalhak.
Councilman Abdallah.
Moby Dune.
Councilman Wenzel.
Abdulhak.
Malinowski Maxwell, Moby Dune. So at this time, um, let me see. This item will be put back on the agenda in approximately two to four weeks. Today, we did not successfully nominate someone to fill the vacancy of the council seat. At this time, let's move on with the agenda. We have the approval of minutes. This is minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of November 24th, 2020.
Council Chair, could I ask a question in regards to the previous item, please? As to how we're going to run it, because this is going to be an important item, if you don't mind?
Go ahead, please.
So being that there's two members that were nominated right now, when we're going to take this into reconsideration, we're going to consider only the two that were nominated? Or are we reconsidering all four?
There was three nominated, or all four were nominated.
All four were nominated, and it was eliminated. It was eliminated down to two.
So are we going to vote on just one of the two? Or are we going to vote on one of the four? Because it has to be clear to be fair to everybody.
It would be one of the two, because we have narrowed it down. Well, Ms. Clerk, what would you like? Would you like to weigh in on that?
I think in the past, it was all four were brought forward again.
Okay, then that's what we will do. Oh, you know what, you are right, I'm looking at this. All forward, all four will be brought forward again. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we have approval of minutes. This is minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of November 24th, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the meetings of the November 24th, 2020 meeting held electronically, as outlined in 4A, be approved.
Court. Court by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have minutes from the electronically held special meeting of November 27th, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the minutes from the special meeting of November 27th, 2020, as outlined in 4B, be approved.
Support.
Court.
Court by Councilman Abdallah, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have minutes from the electronically held special meeting of December 7th, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we approve the minutes from the electronically held special meeting of December the 7th, 2020, which is to be available prior to our meeting, as outlined in Item 4C.
Support.
Court by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. There's a two-minute limit. You need to state your name. And Clerk, in this section, do we ask them to state what city they're in and state and county like we all? Okay, so that would be a requirement.
You want me to read the, would you like me to read the procedure now? Or would you like me to wait until?
You can read it now if you want.
Okay, the procedure for addressing the council during the comment section of the public comment shall be as follows. Any member of the public who wants to address the council shall begin doing so by stating his or her name, the street he or she lives on, and then the municipality in which he or she resides.
First, we have Dana Parrish. You have two minutes, go ahead, please.
Dana Parrish, Greenwich Park Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. Has to do with Item 3A, which is the council vacancy. I want to speak on Mr. Zohair Abdalhak. I don't really, haven't really developed a relationship with him personally, other than we met at some council meetings after having been concerned about some items going on in the city. I would like to speak to all the council members personally, because I've met probably most of you individually and as a group over quite some times. And I would like to say that although Mr. Abdalhak is not perfect, he's tried very hard in the time that I've known him to do his best. I think you know his character, his views on politics, his moral and his ethical standards. You know these things, you know what he stands for. Has he made mistakes? Certainly. Has he offered to apologize? Has he apologized? Yes, he has. He's not an unknown quantity. I think you know him, you know him fairly well. If you have a question about something that happens or has happened, I would say probably ask him. I don't think he's going to lie to you, I don't think he's going to give you a story. If he's made a mistake, he'll tell you. He's not going to cover things up. He hasn't covered things up in the past. I would say a person that you know is probably a better quantity than a person that you suspect or you think or you hear a story about. If I know someone personally, I would probably want to stand behind that person than a person that maybe you don't know or you haven't seen. You see this person speak many, many times at council meetings, you probably wouldn't be doing your audit if it wasn't for Mr. Abdalhak. So think about the time and the resources that he spent on his own, of his own time and his own money, to do the backbreaking work that he's done. Thank you very much.
This time, I would like to call on Treasurer Hicks. Your name, city, county, and state.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair and Honorable Counsel. I would like to speak just briefly to bring some clarity to Item 12A. I was, when I saw this, I was a little surprised, because I've always said, you know, we have an open door, and anyone could call me at any time, and I've said this before. This is a legal opinion letter regarding a position of the Treasurer's office, which would be me, the Treasurer. And then it states a Chief of Staff to see if it is something that can happen simultaneously. I want to, well, one, I'm very concerned that someone didn't call me to discuss this, because I am not in that position, nor have I ever been in that position. So quite frankly, this has been drawn up by an attorney, and it will cost the city, the taxpayers, money when a simple phone call could have prevented all of this. And, you know, I just want to say this is not even applicable. And now to answer the question, there was a comment about what the council can do. The, in the past, the corporate attorney would say, "Receive note and file." I want you to know that it's an inaction. I want to remind you, "Receive note and file" is an inaction. You can accept this, you can vote it down, you can say, "No, we don't accept it," or you can do a "Receive note and file." I did want to tell you that as due diligence, we have requested an opinion letter from the Michigan State Attorney General as well. And so hopefully that will be forthcoming. That has been forwarded to all council members. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, next, we have Mr. Charles Blackwell. Let me unmute him, I'm looking, there he is. There you go, sir.
Hello, my name is Charles Blackwell, I'm a Detroit, Michigan resident. I wanted to speak about Agenda Item 12A. It refers to assistant...
Excuse me, Council Chair, I think we need the street, the street. Yeah, we, we need to stay in the county.
The municipality.
Detroit, Michigan, Wayne County.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak about Agenda Item 12A. It refers to Assistant Corporation Counsel Mark Roberts. According to the city charter, the Corporation Counsel and assistants appointed shall be a resident of Dearborn Heights. And to my knowledge, Mr. Mark Roberts is not a citizen of Dearborn Heights. So I wanted to know, under what authority can he serve as the, you know, Assistant Corporation Counsel, considering that residency issue? Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Lazlo. Can we find her?
Hi, my name is Chrissy Lazlo. I'm on Charlesworth Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. Really quick, just to address Agenda Item 12A. The mayor's office, he had four different employees call the mayor's office and ask if somebody could hold an elected office and be Chief of Staff in a state office. And that's where that opinion came from. What council chooses to do with it is up to council, like Treasurer Hicks Clayton said. But just to shed light where it came from, that's where it came from. Thank you.
Next, I have someone with iPhone. They've got their hand up, and you need to unmute yourself. Please, you have two minutes.
Last I looked, they were muted again.
Yeah. iPhone, can you please unmute yourself if you want to talk? Okay, at this time, I'm going to assume you put your hand up in error. Feel free to raise your hand again if you, that's a mistake. Okay, is there any more public hearing and comment on agenda items at this time? Let's move on. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we approve fund transfers and current claims, number 1 to 38, as outlined in Item Number 6, Agenda Item Number 6.
Support.
Court by Councilman Abdallah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Item 65 talks about this company. I believe that we had another company that had a bid to do the asphalt. So since the amount exceeds the amount that should come in front of, I mean, for bidding, I don't see any bids for that company in 65.
Director Somi, are you in here? I'm looking for him.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
I am.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to answer that?
Oh, sure, so this is, the best asphalt is a company that the city has used in the past. There was four repairs that needed to be completed at the end of this construction season. So I made the decision to go ahead and get the repairs completed. And part of my go-forward plan is to come back to the council with a a bid for as-needed asphalt work and new as-needed concrete work, and to move forward with this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have an iPhone that has their hand raised, but I don't know who they are and if they're management. Director Somi, do you know if anybody else would be in here on an iPhone that might need to comment in regards to this?
Nobody that on my team that I'm aware of.
I'm going to lower the hand, because that's not appropriate at this time to speak. Okay, any further discussion in regards to the fund transfers and current claims?
If Robert Coniston's name, his hand's up.
Councilman, I know, please. Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, Item 38, there's the billing from the attorney Shank and Bruchette, but no copy of the billing from Reiman Robinson, the CPAs, which is the majority of the bill. And I just wondered, is that presented separately?
Clerk, I do believe you had a copy of that, that didn't come out.
Council Secretary's going to get it right now. I think she said it was on the second page. It's the second page of the claim. This is the, I don't know if you can see, this is the first page, Councilman Coniston, and then...
I see it.
Got it?
I got it. It's sideways, but I got it.
Yep.
Thank you, I'm all set.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? This is for fund transfers and current claims. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have consideration of bids. This is for DPW Director Somi, bid award for City Hall roof replacement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I'd like to concur with DPW Director John Somi for the bids that he's turned in for City Hall roof replacement, as outlined in Item 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I have two questions. The first question, since I looked at the bid sheet that was sent before, that was prepared to put the bid on, and it looked like there was a lot of questions about certifications for that type of roof. So I was, I was researching the company that, that was referenced on here. I don't know if it was, I can't see the certification of that company certified to put that type of roof on the City Hall. That's the first question.
You want me to answer now?
Go ahead, Director Somi, you're unmuted.
So sure, so after we received the bids, we met with the contractor and to go over the items. They've been in business for over 30 years. Advance Roofing is a Firestone master contractor. The estimator on the project with Advance has about 10 years' experience with the company. We went over the pricing on the roof, the type of material, the expectations, and we confirmed everything in a one-on-one meeting with the company. So that's the basis for the recommendation. They are qualified, and they are the lowest qualified bidder.
Okay, so the second question, thank you. Second question on that same topic. Since, you know, we talked about this last time, you know, with the cost of, you know, the adhesive, you know, during this weather. Are we going to wait till April? I'm just kind of wondering why it's put on the agenda of approving company. I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead and finish, my bad.
So like, I guess, are we, are we going to defer this? So we're not going to see a bill till spring? And also, let me see, yep, so that's pretty much my, the two questions that I have.
Yeah, so the, to answer your second question, yes, we are going to do this in spring when the weather breaks. The contractor has agreed to this price, there will be no price increase. It's also beneficial to us to get this on as soon as possible. Just, and I agree with the statements from the prior meetings, you know, to try to do it in this time of year, it's too dicey. So the consensus is that we will do it in the springtime, and the contractor's on board with that.
Okay, thanks, I'm sorry, I missed one more thing. I have my notes, warranty, what, I didn't see it in the, in the sheet, the bid sheet, or even the contract. I don't know if I missed it, the warranty, what type of warranty are we getting with this?
Yeah, so there is a warranty in there. Don't have it right on the top of my head here. But there is a warranty, and it is certified by the contractor and by Firestone, the manufacturer of the material. And I believe, I want to say, I want to say 10 years.
Okay.
But I can get you that information tomorrow morning, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Somi, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, Council Chair, due to an emergency situation, I'm going to have to leave the meeting, but I'll keep you on as long as I, it's possible.
Thank you. Hope you're doing okay, Councilman.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next, we have Councilman Abdallah.
Council Chair, so I just want to amend my motion, because I was trying to go to that page and couldn't finish the sentence. So this is for roof replacement contract, an amount of $288,500, as they are the lowest qualified bidder, and payment to be authorized upon successful completion of the installation of the new roof. Additionally, requesting city refund all bid deposits to all unsuccessful bidders. And this is outlined in Item 7A.
Support.
Court by Councilman Coniston.
I have a question for John Somi, please.
Go ahead, please, Councilman Abdallah.
Director, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it just creates a little bit of a red flag when I went through the estimates, and I know everybody does different bidding, but anyone we're going with is $288,500, which was the lowest, which is good. I don't know the company, so I presume that you've done your due diligence on them. But with that being said, you, there was estimates in there from 200 for the same job, because remember, you put it out for RFPs, you have specific parameters that they have to follow. So usually, they're using the same material, et cetera, et cetera. I couldn't understand how one went from $288,000 to another one, almost four times the amount, at $920,000. Why was, why is there, and there was multiple in the 500 and 600, what have you? And the concern that I've got is, are we getting, okay, the lowest bidder, but are we getting any type of different material? Is this not as good of workmanship? You know, it's just a thought that came to my mind, I'm just wondering your thoughts on that, please.
No, that's a fair question. That's the first thing I noticed, too, was, you know, the low bid there.
Because it's a drastic difference, it's not low.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, the 900,000, you know, that's a home run, and everybody gets a new truck, I guess, you know. The low bid, that's one of the reasons that raised red flags with us, and we met with the contractor in person, well, you know, via Zoom or phone call, to confirm his price. Once he's seen the bid tab, you know, they realized that they left some money on the table. So, but we pressed them on that issue, that they were still going to do the work with the material specified. We're going to have the daily inspection, half a day, with the person that helped us develop this specification. So, and they, they agree, and so I guess there's some, some wiggle room in that roofing business, and it just depends on, you know, how hungry you are in the beginning of the year.
Right, but being, being the lowest bidder, this is where I have some concerns. What type of due diligence have we done to find out if this is a reputable company? Have we done business with them?
Yeah, so, so the company, yeah, so the company that we hired to help us do the bids back, they vetted all of them, they have worked with them in the past. So that's why we sat down one-on-one, met with them. If you'd like, I can send you a synopsis of the meeting, of the questions answered, specifically regarding that low bid, right? Because like I said, you know, that, you know, significant. No different than a water main project or the CSO project we're currently doing, right? The low bid was 3 million, the next bid was 3.6, right? And the same thing, we vetted them, right? And so that's what we've done, and I don't know if you're confident in it.
Yeah, if you have that information readily handy, I'd appreciate it, if you don't mind. I'm sure you did your due diligence, but just a question I had, thank you.
And I'll send it, I'll send it to the council in the morning.
Please, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Hadad Bid Award for Kitchen Remodel at the Berwin Senior Center Recreation.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur with the Recreation Director and approve the bid for the kitchen remodel at the Berwin Senior Citizen Center, as outlined in 7B.
Support.
Court by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
So this is for Director Brian Hadad. If you could clarify for me, are you there, by chance?
Yes, I am.
Yes, he's unmuted.
Okay, excellent. So this, on, on... Okay, excellent. So, this, on the estimates I looked at, just at least for the public to know, there was, I'm gonna tell you the ones that did not get it. There was one for eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven, and then another one for seventy-nine thousand eight hundred with an alternative twenty-five thousand. The question I have, the company that we're going with, Hicks Construction Company, for forty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-three, but then it says alternative number one, fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-one. What is that alternative specifically in regards to?
Well, the, excuse me, I'm sorry, the alternative is the roof repair outside of, like, it's the overhang repair outside of the kitchen area there, one of the doorways. It is slanted in, in the wintertime, it is icing up, and it is just not in good shape. It needs to be repaired, so that's, that's part of this bid as well. It was, there was an amendment in the bid package as well.
Other companies.
The alternate is for, I'm sorry.
So do the other companies, the ones that are eighty-eight, one twenty-eight, seventy-nine, and sixty-five, did those include the alternate? Well, seventy-nine did include the alternative, but sixty-five, one twenty-eight, and eighty-eight, did those include the alternative?
Yes, they did already.
But it didn't say.
I'm sorry.
It didn't say that in the notes.
Yeah, I do have the bid packets, I can actually send all you guys if you'd like to see them all. But in all of those, all five of those, well, the two of them that have the alternative, they bid on that separately. The three that didn't, bitted that on that altogether.
That makes sense, thank you.
No problem.
I'd like to say something too, that the kitchen over at Berwin is really old. It's original to the school when it was an elementary school. I've done Meals on Wheels there, and it really does need to be updated. It's in, the door sticks to get in from the one entrance. And I'm glad to see this on the agenda.
That will be fixed as well.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. When we do Meals on Wheels, it's hard to get the stuff out that door. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, request for bids, fire engine.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Fire Chief David Brogan, requesting permission to start the bidding process to purchase a new fire engine. This engine will replace a nineteen ninety-four fire engine, and he anticipates the cost for the new engine to be between five hundred thousand and five hundred and seventy-five thousand, of which a hundred and fifty thousand will come from capital outlay and finance the remaining amount through the treasurer's office. And the current, one that he's replacing is twenty-six years old, and he has become cost prohibitive to keep this in service, and this is as outlined in item seven C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Constance, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Chief, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so, oh, that's right, I didn't see you earlier, sorry. So if, sometimes, sometimes what happens with these types of things, so first of all, anything with fire, obviously, I want as much safety as we can get, so I'm always for it, but I just want to get a clearer understanding, so I get a bird's eye view as to what's going on with the fire department, because I know we have approved fire engines in the past, or at least in the relative past, I think we've been in the last, was it year or two, maybe? And then I know we've approved some ambulances, so can you give us a synopsis of where your department stands as far as the types of vehicles, needed vehicles that you have, and when do you foresee that we're gonna need possibly new ones? And when did we recently get? So just a general synopsis, maybe.
Sure. Well, to begin, we have, we have four fire engines, that's the traditional fire engines that you see, one of them being the ladder truck. So, so we have, we have three traditional ones and one that's a quint with the ladder on top. The ladder truck is the newest one, that's what will be about a year old. And after that, we have, it's the Red Marion that was, that's in the south end, and that one's about seven years old. So those are the trucks that are in service as our first-line trucks every day. But they go out of service on a very regular basis for whatever, it could be scheduled maintenance, or if they have some kind of issues. You know, a seven-year-old truck starts to have more issues, and when they do, our two reserve trucks are twenty-four years old and twenty-six years old, and so that's, that's where they're, and they have to be kept ready at all times, because they're reserved, we can't say, well, if we need it, we'll get it repaired. It has to be ready to go, because we don't know when it's gonna be put into service. So, keeping those trucks up and going, it gets really expensive, like all the plumbing, you know, imagine the plumbing in your house, and now it's in a truck that's in freezing weather, driving down Michigan roads, and you get a small repair on a truck like that, just trying to work on it, you know, something else might break loose further down the line, and so it just becomes very expensive and hard to keep fire trucks going. After twenty years, you're really kind of pushing it. So two of our four are over twenty years old. So if we, if we get this one, then we'll just have the one truck left that's, that's over that range. And so, but we will need to replace that truck in the, I mean, within the next probably two to three years. I mean, maybe three years, because we would have three younger trucks, once we get this, this new one, so.
And how are we doing on the ambulances? I know you guys have a different name for it, but.
Yeah, yeah, so the ambulances, so we call them rescues, they're, they're, we could probably use another one of those. We have, we have two, the two smaller ones that we got recently that have the pickup truck front. Those have been very popular, they ride a lot smoother. The guys and the patients have been very complimentary of those. So those are our newest, and they're about, they're about one to two years old, depending, and then we have the bigger medium-duty trucks. We have three of those, and we almost always, one of them is in the shop, because they're, they're much older, and so we're, we have two of them that are about five, five to six years old, and then we have two more that are, that are quite a bit older than that, that are probably eight or nine, and these trucks have over a hundred thousand miles on them. And so we only put them in service at the very, you know, when we, when we absolutely have to, because they ride a lot rougher, and like I said, they're just not, not as reliable. But so, so for the most part, we've been doing, you know, and we write for grants for these every year. But the vehicle grants are very hard to come by. And so we're, we're always trying, and so the mayor and I work, work together, trying to come up with a plan to replace these on a, on a regular basis, because when we were in the really tough times, you know, several years ago, we were in no position to buy these trucks, and that's when we really started to need, you know, that's when we were really aggressively going after the grants, and I told them to hold off on buying them, because I was kind of hoping we would get, get a grant. We did get a grant for ambulance, but they didn't pay for the, for the entire month, actually for two, and for a part of the Marion truck as well. So we did, we have had some success with the grants, but not, we were hoping, we were kind of holding off buying another new truck, hoping we were gonna get another grant that just hasn't come through yet, so that's, that's where we're at now. I could, I could give you, I have a spreadsheet that has like some suggested replacement dates. I had that, I put it in the budget a couple of years ago, but I, I don't remember what document that was in, but, but I can certainly give you another one of those sheets if you want to see kind of a overall view of the department's fleet.
It's easier to make a decision than just one by one, because I don't know what total you've got, so I'd like to get a, so we can have an idea of where your, you know, flow.
Yeah, we do have a master plan, kind of, and so I can, I can give you that sheet and give it to you guys and show you where we're at.
If you don't mind, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions in regards to this agenda item? This is agenda item seven C, bid request for the fire engine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from city officials. This is City Clerk Senia, annual publication amended notice of meetings.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move we concur with our city clerk, Lynn Senia, and allow her, and authorize her to publish the amended notice of our meetings, of all the meetings for the city, all the different groups and commissions, as outlined in nine A.
Support.
For the Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have City Clerk Senia, City Council Motion twenty dash four one one, six oh five five backslash six oh five six, reporting assistance.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our city clerk, Lynn Senia, who at our council meeting of November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, our body approved the continuation of the city's retention of Plant Moran Group Benefit Advisors in regards to the reporting provision under the Affordable Care Act, and a motion is attached. Now including that motion was the authorization for the mayor and clerk to sign these documents, so she's requesting that we authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign on behalf of the city the previously approved agreement by City Council Motion twenty dash four one one, with Plant Moran Group Benefit Advisors and to sub-license with HCM filed to implement reporting provision section six zero five five dash slash six zero five six, that the City of Dillon Heights has under the Affordable Care Act, as outlined in item nine B.
Depend.
For the Councilman Constance, is there any questions in regards to this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I brought this up at the last meeting, obviously I voted no for this previously, because there was no, it was never sent off for bid, they just awarded this company the contract, and I asked for that last year as well, you know, need a statement of, you know, conflict of interest, since we're getting audited by the same company, and they're doing other work for the city. So obviously, that's why I'm voting no again, just want to go on record again.
Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I'm gonna do a roll call, I'm not hearing half of the people. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Constance?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilman Adella?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Not here.
Emergency.
Shoot, he did leave. Malanowski Maxwell, no, it fails. Next item on the agenda is Comptroller Bonza, fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, financial statement audit report.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that we accept the fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty through twenty twenty financial statement audit report, and authorize Plant Moran to file the audit report with the state of Michigan, and further authorize all forms to be filed as outlined in the Plant Moran letter dated November eleventh, twenty twenty, as outlined in nine C.
Support.
For the Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So this is for the administration and for Plant Moran, and this is one of the reasons why, where we've had this controversy of a, you know, forensic audit, or no forensic audit, issues that have come up, challenges that have come up, you know, different things that have needed to be worked on. And we have this audit done every single year, and obviously it costs us a lot of money, and every single year they give us the reports right here, and in them, there's all kinds of things that need to be implemented, or asked for, or possibly issues, challenges, or wrongdoings, whatever you want to call them. With that being the case, I've always had it, found it problematic, that it's kind of left at the administration's end, and they're the ones that are caught doing, I, let me backtrack, not caught doing the wrongdoing, but with things that need correction, and then they have to self-police themselves. I've always felt that whoever is the auditor, in this case Plant Moran, should be the one to follow up and make sure that things have been implemented, and then give us a report, because we are not experts in the accounting field to be able to know exactly every single item that has been implemented and how, and satisfactory enough. And I asked Plant Moran this at the last study session that we had, and they said we could do that if we put a request in. I'd like to see us put a request in, that we follow through on these items that are brought in these reports every single year, and make sure that we cross them off as having been done and satisfactory, and if they're not done and satisfactory, why, and can we live with them not being done and being satisfactory? Otherwise, what's happening is, you're getting a police officer catching somebody, you give them a ticket, and you just rely on them to make sure they go pay the ticket and do whatever needs to be done to make sure he follows, he or she follows all the way through. I've found this to be very problematic, because I find it that we're doing this almost kind of sort of for no reason. And I don't know if the administration has a system in place, but again, we're leaving it to them with due respect to self-monitor, and that doesn't work right. There should be some sort of an accountability thing from the person that asked for these items to be implemented. And in this case, it'd be Plant Moran following through, and it's not a part of their job description, they said. So it's something we'd have to hire them in addition to what we are already paying them, and obviously we have to get some sort of a cost factor on them, but I think it's a good idea to go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Did you say Constance, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And I concur with Councilman Abdullah, and I remember him mentioning this, and Plant Moran is very experienced in doing audits, they're familiar with our city. There was some mention by Martin that it, you know, there might be some extra cost or something. I wouldn't think it would be a big cost, and it would be well, well worth it to, you know, have them follow and correct what findings, what problems they find in the audit that need to be corrected, and I think it would more than pay for itself. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mayor, yes, mayor.
Yeah, I assume I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
We have certainly no objections to that. What I would suggest is a separate motion. One of the reasons that we have to file this with the state is that's the only way we become eligible for grants and state shared revenue, so by December thirty-first, what is outlined in nine C, the report has to be filed with the state of Michigan. What I would suggest you do is follow up on that particular motion, and then if Councilman Abdullah wanted to make a separate motion right after requesting from Plant Moran a proposal for them following up on recommendations that they had made in the audit, and we would be very supportive of that.
Sounds like a good idea. Okay, and I, Madam Chair. I guess we have to go on the first motion then first, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry. And then I'll make the second motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
I have a question on that still.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
You know, we spent seventy-some thousand dollars with Plant Moran on getting ready to get an audit. Okay? And I don't ever remember the comptroller coming to us and saying she needs help to get ready for an audit. So I just want to let you know that was seventy thousand dollars that we spent to get ready for an audit, and we got an audit, so just to let you guys remember that.
Councilman, I want to say, are you referencing the forensic audit, or are you referencing?
No, no, we spent seventy thousand dollars to correct some things going on and getting ready for an audit, that I think the comptroller should have done.
Forensic audit, or are we talking?
No, the regular audit.
Okay.
Okay, I think the comptroller should have been able to do that by herself, but it didn't happen that way. We spent a lot of money.
And I'd like, Council Chair.
Want to amend your motion? Or do you want to take a vote?
Well, we can take a vote, but I just want to make a comment. This is, what I've just stated is no reflection in any way, shape, or form in regards to the forensic audit. This, that's a whole separate conversation. I'm talking about, I've seen this every single year, and I just think we need some sort of a corrective action on all these items that they bring to the table. So we probably should vote on the first one now, I'll do the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. Fire Chief, yes, Councilman?
So I'd like, this is a new motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we as a council body, or the administration, have Plant Moran give us a price as to the follow-through on the audit, and I don't want to see this year's date, because I want this to be done on a yearly basis. And I don't, I don't want to say this year's date because I want this to be done on a yearly basis. On audits that are done or given to our city to follow through and make sure that things are implemented. And if they're not implemented, why they were not implemented and give us an opinion every single year.
Support. To part.
For my counsel Muscat, is there any?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I'm not, I'm not up for this motion and the reason why is the two things. One is we already have what we put down, you know, we we keep discussing the forensic audit, you know, so now we're asking the same company who's doing an audit to come back and re-audit. So when we we discussed this couple of years ago, we went over all the findings, you know, some of the findings were repeat, you know, over and over, the same findings for the last, what, ten to twelve years that when we, when I reviewed it. So not all of them, but a lot of, lot of same findings. So that was never corrected. So we paid Plant Moran to do an audit, but it was always the same finding the you know, the next year or the following year. So why are we doing another having, having to pay them again so they can come back and re-audit mid-year? I think that's some money. I mean, we, if we, if we, we should just go back and correct it. I mean, I I think we have you know, competent people that they can go in there and if there's a, if there's an issue that they can go correct the issue. So we'll be ready for the next year. So I don't know why we need somebody else to come back. I mean, I'm I'm sorry, Mayor, in all, all respect, but you know, you're a CPA. So why are we paying a company to come back and re-audit us to tell us the same thing that, hey, you guys have an issue? I mean, we already know we have an issue. They already wrote it, you know, in the, in the audit findings. So my previous experience and and you know, when I was a lead auditor in the past, you know, you you write the findings and it's the company or, you know, in this case, the city is to correct the, to correct it to be in compliance, not for the auditors to come back and say, hey, you didn't correct it, you know, this is how you need to correct it. I think that's just a waste of money.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So two things, Councilman, just to clarify my thought process. A, I want to get a price. So obviously, and I'm in agreement with you, if they came back and said, let's just throw a number of seventy thousand, I would, I'd be totally in disfavor of this. I'd like to know what, what price they would charge us to do this. That's one. And B, and I do see your point, but I want to clarify. The challenge with what you, what, what, you know, they're doing right now, the current system is they don't come back for another twelve month to do this. So whatever they did today or asked, are asking us for today, we wouldn't know if the city did or didn't do this until next we were in December. Again, and that's where I've got, I find that problematic. I'd like in between to have some sort of a a bird's eye view as far as where we're at of the things that they had asked for. But again, at this particular point with this motion, all I want to know is what, what price, what would it cost? And then we can decide on that if it's worth one.
Yeah, Madam Chair, can I?
I'm sorry, next we have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, you know, I I I see both views of Councilman Bazey and Councilman Abdullah. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't hurt for us to know how much. And then once we find out how much, we can then decide yea or nay. And but I do agree with Councilman Bill Bazey. These are things that you do on your own. And we do have a leading CPA as a mayor.
Next, we have Councilman Constant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, yeah, at this point, we're just seeing if we can get a price and we could also include in the motion to refer the findings back to the administration to have the administration get the problems corrected. This is, you know, just really could be part of the audit that Plant Moran could say, and you know, to correct this problem. Don't use cash anymore for A, B, or C. Stop using city credit cards this way. You know, it it shouldn't be complicated and it shouldn't be anything that's too expensive. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey, you're next.
Yeah, I again, as I said, it, you know, I mean, what Councilman Muscat mentioned, I mean, I can understand what Councilman Abdullah is talking about, but at the same time, what Councilman Muscat mentioned, you know, we did pay them to come back and to prepare for the audit. So why do we have to? I mean, this is silly. We we, they were paid to prepare for an audit. They did an audit. Now we got to come back and pay them again. To, I mean, even getting a a price on it is is useless right now because there, you know, all the repeat findings over the years, it was never corrected. Some of them obviously were not, were not all, but some were not corrected. So why we have to go back and rebid again? Okay, or get a quote for, I mean, this is, it's, it's, to me, it's silly.
Do you have a motion on the table? Is there any further discussion before we take a vote? Okay, this is for nine C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we need to do a roll call. Um, Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Constant?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
I'm here.
Absent, he's, he had an emergency. Melonowski Maxwell? Yes, the motion passes. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase AED defibrillators with an AFG grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move, we concur with our Fire Chief Dave Brogan and approve the purchase of the AED defibrillators with the money from the AFG grant as outlined in nine D.
Support.
For my counsel Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have again Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase AED defibrillators with the AFG grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our Fire Chief David Brogan, who's requesting permission to purchase Zoll defibrill, defibrillators as detailed in the attached invoices. These devices are a part of the regional AFG grant. The total to be paid will be four hundred and twenty seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two. Of this amount, the grant will cover three hundred and ninety seven thousand, seven fifty-one. And the participating departments, side note, multiple cities, will reimburse thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one. There are three separate vendors involved in this grant purchase, so they will need three separate POs to complete the purchase. And this is outlined in item nine E as, as dated, and I I think we should make a correction on the last motion too. We received something from a clerk's office that's a correct date because there's a date here of June the thirtieth. Madam clerk, what is the correct date? As outlined in nine E.
November thirtieth.
November.
November thirtieth, yeah.
Thank you.
For my counsel Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase AED defibrillators with the AFG grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our Fire Chief David Brogan. He's requesting permission to purchase Bounty defibrillator, I hate that word, as detailed, as detailed in the attached invoices. These devices are a part of the regional AFG grant. The total to be paid will be twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven. Of this, the grant will cover twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five and the participating departments will reimburse two thousand, six hundred and sixty-two. And this is outlined in item nine F.
Support.
For my counsel Muscat, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Counselor Muscat.
Why weren't all these just put together at one, on one? One item.
Brogan, I'm going to unmute you to, no, go ahead.
Yeah, because there is three different vendors and so we have to have three separate POs. And so we have Zoll, Life Pack and Bounty. And because we were doing, it's, it's almost has to be three separate purchases.
So there are three different type of defibrillators.
Yes, three different manufacturers.
All right. All right.
Further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy, purchase and payment water and highway department equipment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our Public Works Director John Selmy, who's requesting permission to purchase one twelve-foot fusion coupler, Mount Cat snow pusher in an amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and the authorized payment upon receipt of this item. The water and highway departments will split the purchase, costing them out thirty-nine oh five each and it will be charged equally. And this is outlined in, is outlined in item nine G.
Support.
For my counsel Constant, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I'd like, and I apologize, Director Selmy, I know I spoke with you about a couple of things earlier this week, didn't have the conversation with you about this one. So if you don't mind letting us know the, the, the purpose that you need this right now. Did you have, it's gone old situation?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a piece of a, a snow removal equipment that will go on the, and uh, onto the new front end loader that the city council approved. So much like you see in big parking lots or major parking lots, the snow box that goes on front of there. So we can be more effective and efficient cleaning lots, particularly all the city lots and our DPS yard. And in case of majors, major, major snowstorms, we can also use it, you know, on our roads too. So me personally, I thought it was a, a good piece of equipment to get a good price. Certainly becomes more effective and efficient than the regular bucket on the front of a, a end loader.
So we don't have one now, right? This is from zero, starting from scratch, right?
City never had one and and it's my recommendation that I think it'd be, help us be effective and efficient with that process.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion in regards to item nine G? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Headed, Park and Recreation Commission Appointment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our Parks and Recreation Director Brian Headed, who has Recreation Commission Meetings have been sus, who has the, whose commission recreation meetings had been suspended until further notice and they plan on starting their Recreation Commission meetings back on Jan- January the fourth, two thousand and twenty-one via Zoom and he's submitting to our body consideration for Martin O'Sullivan for reappointment, who's currently on the board. And Steve Henry to take over a vacancy to be appointed to the commission with their term ending in September, two thousand and twenty-two. And therefore, he's recommending Martin O'Sullivan of two, three, three, five, six Brookside Drive in Dewan Heights. Be reappointed and Steve Henry have the new appointment. And this is for the term ending on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, is outlined in item nine H.
Support.
That was two, two, twenty twenty-two, Councilman Abdullah.
Well, I was, I was for it, okay.
For. Councilman Constant, did you support that?
I did.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard. Okay, is there any discussion in regards to this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah. Councilman Abdullah.
For Director Headed. Yes, sir. For Director Headed. So and 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 this is no reflection on just you only because I feel like there's a lot of different commissions that are there, but you know, not as many meetings and even during the COVID situation. And I do know you were helping at City Hall, so I appreciate that, letting people in. But why was there no meetings? Because to me, I would think this would be a good time during this pandemic and during this lockdown to start pre-planning so that come, you know, springtime, we're up and running, hopefully. And we're implementing a lot of things that we need to do because, you know, as, as we talked about when you were first hired, I felt our recreation department was challenged, to say the least. You know, as compared to a lot of other cities of similar size. I mean, I feel we're doing the bare bones minimum. And Recreation Commission obviously would help a lot in moving us forward and advancing us and and creating nice recreation for people. Why were we, why was there no meetings? I mean, you could do them from home.
Well, in the beginning, when I first hired, I started the Recreation Commission meetings back up and I was never getting a quorum. To this day, I have not received a quorum during any one of my meetings, unfortunately. And that's hence the appointment of Blah Aman and Steve Henry now. With that being said, once March hit, we did try to have a meeting in March and again, didn't have a quorum. Then April and May went through typically. They don't have the meetings. They have meetings every, every Monday, every first Monday of the month and it just honestly, it didn't happen. I could not get a quorum still, so I just canceled the meetings. All, everybody else was not being able to make the meetings or for one of our commission members does not have a computer and cannot do Zoom. So I did explain to them, they can use a phone and go that route. And he is an older gentleman and he couldn't figure that out. So.
But we had these conversations about, I remember about, I, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, about a year, year and a half ago. I mean, even if you had, you know, meetings, even without voting, at least, you know, start having some discussions. Look, I want to see the city be vibrant. I want to see better things coming into the city. And and I'm excited about you being a director, young guy involved in sports and the whole nine yards. But we got to start having these meetings and and if people are not showing up to the meetings, then then they're caught. Get rid of them. Get somebody else. Get people that are excited about, about this. Because I know at one point, you know, I was happy for the including Billy Aman, you know, and I know he's a part of hype and he's very involved with sports. But we got to start having these meetings. I remember a while back, about a year and a half ago, before the pandemic, it was a summer situation where there was no meetings. And honestly, I find that problematic because our recreation department definitely needs some work, definitely needs.
I I agree. I agree. Like I said, we're going to start our meetings back up on January fourth and hopefully we can move forward to make the city even better.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. And whatever.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under ordinances and resolutions, Mayor Puleko's resolution for Wayne County Annual Twenty Twenty-One Permit Package.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the city council authorized John Selmy, our Public Works Director, to sign the Wayne County Annual Twenty Twenty-One Permit Package and Performance Resolution for Annual Maintenance, Pavement Restoration and Special Events to be formed on, performed on Wayne County Rightits of Way in Dearborn Heights during two thousand and twenty-one as outlined in eleven A.
Support.
For my counsel Abdullah, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Emergency Management Coordinator Gavin, Resolution for Two Thousand and Twenty Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that we concur with our Emergency Management Coordinator Lee Gavin and pass the resolution authorizing the Two Thousand and Twenty Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan as outlined in eleven B.
Support.
For my counsel Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under Communications, we have Assistant Corporation Counsel Mark Roberts, Legal Opinion Regarding the Application of Incompatible Public Offices Act. That's Act five, six, six of nineteen seventy-eight.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that we receive, note and file the memorandum, the legal opinion from our Assistant Corporation Counsel Mark Roberts as outlined in twelve A.
It has failed due to lack of support. Next item on the agenda is new business. Business License Renewals for Mexican Fiesta Located at two, four, three, one, zero Ford Road. M, also known as MHS International. Located at two, oh, four, seven, five West Warren. I'm sorry, those are two different businesses. I'm sorry, the way it was written, it didn't show. So that's Mexican Fiesta and MHS International.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our city clerk approving the renewal application for licenses for Mexican Fiesta located at two, four, three, one, zero Ford Road in Dearborn Heights and then also MHS International. located at two, four, three, one, zero Ford Road in Dearborn Heights, and then also, uh, MHS International, uh, Hamid Twaydan at two zero four seven five West Warren Avenue in Dearborn Heights, as outlined in items number thirteen A.
Support, support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have comments from council members. Councilman Musket, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, Council Chair. Uh, I just want to bring up, uh, last council meeting we had, I brought up a situation of a vehicle that I felt was not authorized by city council. Uh, that was, that presently, that the city mayor, the mayor is driving now. And I just want to make a comment that that vehicle was approved by city council back in, in two thousand seventeen, and it was nine M on the agenda of eleven twenty-eight seventeen. But I may add of how the vehicle was, uh, authorized by the city council. And I'm very upset and displeased and disappointed in former Chief Lee Gavin for coming to city council, and I, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read the motion. This was from Police Chief Lee Gavin, request to purchase and pay police vehicles. I re- re- respectfully request authorization to purchase and pay for four two thousand eighteen Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive and one Ford Police Interceptor Sedan All-Wheel Drive in the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The price is quoted with the McComb County Bits Spec- Spec- Specifications and Award. The cars will be purchased from Signature Ford. I am requesting that this vehicle be paid with funds from Capital Outlay, which is already in the current budget. And I'm also requesting authorization for payment upon delivery, respectfully, Lee Gavin. Now, coming forward to city council with this document, I am good faith, and I believe all the other council people voted yes, because we thought we were buying the police vehicles. I then received an email from the mayor, which I may read, please. The Ford Taurus I am cur- currently driving was approved by the city council on November twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, via City Council Motion seventeen four oh three. No policies the rules were about this purchase as per city charter. It is my right to reassign equipment and supplies to various departments within the city. These cars were purchased using general fund dollars. There was no intention to deceive, and I do not appreciate that disregarding and a ga- auxiliary remarks. To me, we all know, at least I know, how this was done. They went around the back door to purchase a car for the mayor, and let me add, let me add that the clam of the mayor, being able to move everything around, I can't see that in a charter. And his claims of, and he claims power is absolute, beyond review. That's area, and it smacks, and it smacks the royal, uh, smacks of royal authority. And the citizens of this city don't deserve it. Transparency should be the first thing that we do. And that was not transparent. As far as I'm concerned, that vehicle belongs with the police department where it was purchased, and I don't care where the funds came from, those funds, no matter what account they're in, are taxpayer money. So that's what I have to say about the subject, I'm sure Mr. Mayor will have something to say about it, but that's how I truly believe. And I want this on the record of how this was done, and I just don't like it. I'm very, very displeased that how this was done through the back door. Okay, all they needed to do was say, hey, I need a car, car's breaking down, I have not seen any maintenance records, I don't even know where the old vehicle is. Did we sell it? Did it get wrecked? How many miles are on it? Don't have a clue on where the other vehicle is. And that's a city council job, when they come to us and they want to get rid of equipment, we do that, we give the okay, not the mayor. So, which is it gonna be? If it's gonna be the mayor doing it, then don't bring it back to city council anymore, thank you. That's what I have to say today.
Mayor, did you want to comment on that?
Uh, no, I do not, he read my response to him, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I want to thank, uh, the CDBG Director Joe Hashem uh, for the help and the work they did finally getting the, uh, kitchen at the Berwin Senior Center uh, improved and the, uh, other improvements that need to be done, so this will be paid for not with money from the general fund, but with, uh, uh, the grant money, the HUD money, so thank you, uh, Joe Hashem. Um, and I also want to say, um, I think Councilman Abdullah's suggestion regarding the, uh, findings of the auditors and the audit um, and the following through on making sure those are corrected is, is a, a very good idea, it really should be part of the whole audit process, and I would remind the council that we, uh, contract to have that audit done. And that's the first place that we need to look and look at and take care of, um, you know, regarding the managing of the, uh, city's funds. Thank you.
Councilman Bazey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I'd just like to thank, uh, Chief Myers, um, we had, uh, had a big toy for tots, uh, event, also, it was co- combined with a food drive on Saturday, and, uh, was a lot of, uh, residents from Dearborn Heights that showed up, uh, to, uh, to drop off toys and also pick up food boxes. Uh, so I want to thank, uh, Chief Myers, uh, for, uh, being part of it, uh, also partnering with Dearborn Police, and he had his, uh, his, uh, two kids there, his son and daughter. Uh, they were, they worked very hard, you know, we, uh, we appreciated it, thank you so much. And, um, I know, uh, there was a lot of questions, uh, were actually sent to the police department in Dearborn Heights about, uh, some people that missed it, they want to give toys, you know, this is a critical year, as everyone knows with COVID. Uh, a lot of parents, you know, they lost their job, and some of them are, uh, unemployed, they can't collect unemployment, they can't afford toys for their kids, you know, as of right now, we have a thousand families, uh, both in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights that, uh, submitted requests for toys, and we're having problems, uh, you know, meeting, meeting those, uh, numbers. So I know there are some people that questioned, uh, sent requests to Dearborn High School Police Department about drop off location. So, uh, the Mustang Club is actually hosting an event this Saturday from ten to two at the step post, so if you want to donate toys for the needy, you know, for unwrapped toys, uh, please, uh, bring it to the step post on Saturday from ten, uh, to two, uh, thank you.
I wasn't gonna say anything. But I just want to say, in regards to replacing the council, the person on council, I personally have received a lot of calls, voicemails, texts, emails. And one text could have possibly been a violation of the Open Meetings Act if I didn't write in there, do not respond, because it, you had a quorum in there. Um, and there was no response, so thank God we didn't have that. Um, I just want to say I don't react well to threats or being bullied. I was threatened and bullied into who I should vote for or who I should not vote for. Um, I'm an adult, and I was even considering exposing them and maybe embarrassing them because of what they've done, but I'm going to be above that, um, first of all, I like to say I adore Mr. Abdul Hawk with all my heart, he's a wonderful guy, I have nothing bad to say about him. This is not about a friendship or popularity contest. The reason I chose who I chose when I voted is because in my eyes, the residents showed their support for a certain individual who got out there and ran and came in number five out of eleven, only the top four were chosen. So, um, and they lost by a little, just a little over a hundred votes, so they had a lot of votes in the city, they put themselves out there. I feel that I'm listening to the residents when I voted the way I am, I don't mean any disrespect to anybody else, but that was the reason for my decision, um, and I didn't appreciate the calls and the texts and everything else that I got in regards to it. I would never do that to somebody else, and I was shocked to see the people who had done that to me, that, that just really I don't know, I'm disappointed, to say the least. Um, at this time, I will open the, the meeting up to public announcements. Uh, couns-, I'm sorry, treasure Hicks Clayton, I gotta get used to that. I gotta unmute you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wanted to make a quick announcement from the treasurer's office. Winter tax bills were mailed out on Friday, December fourth, so everyone should be receiving those in their homes by now. We want to remind everyone that the winter tax bills are due February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So when you get your bill, you're gonna notice there's two dates. The correct date for the due date is the top date here on your bill itself, this is the remit part, it comes back to the city, this is where the printing error is. Again, the bills are due February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, we just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. Uh, we want to also let folks know that the, the, uh, Dearborn Heights Treasurer's Office will be open starting next week, December fourteenth through Thursday, December seventeenth, from nine AM till noon, and then open again from one to three PM, so you'll be able to come in. We do want to let people know that we are, require masks, as well as the health screenings are required. And we will only allow five people in the building at a time to come to the treasurer's office, and we will be social distancing with a six feet, that will be enforced, so I want to let everyone know, be prepared, there could be a line, and you may have to be waiting, so dress appropriately for the weather. Um, we're gonna do our best to accommodate people, we still want to encourage you, there are options that you can exercise, including mailing your check or money order, you can pay online, you can use our Dropbox, but please, no cash in the do- Dropbox, you can leave a money order or, or your check. And, um, one thing I want to tell people though, is if you really want to pay with cash, we do have an agreement with Dearborn Federal Savings Bank. There are several locations in the area, but the closest one to City Hall is located on Warren Avenue at two, seven, one, one, five, that's two, seven, one, one, five, West Warren, which is Warren and Inkster Road. So that's about two point three miles from City Hall, and they do have their lobby open as well as their drive-through, and they will take your winter taxes there, including cash. Um, if you have any questions, please feel free to call our office, we're available, we're here taking your calls and answering your questions. The office number's three, one, three, seven, nine, one, three, four, one, zero, and again, thank you to everyone, all of our residents, as well as the administration for your patience as we navigate through these unprecedented times, thank you.
Next, we have Director Headed.
Good evening, Council, good evening, Mayor, uh, I hope everybody had a good, uh, holiday and stayed safe. Um, just want to reiterate a couple of things I said the last time we were, uh, we met a couple of weeks ago. Um, Zuma Santa's coming up on December fifteenth, the slot, the time slots are quickly, um, getting filled, so if you have not, um, sent, uh, in an email to us to have your child, or even yourself, if you want to meet with Santa, come on down. Meet with Santa, tell him what you want, and, uh, we'll get everything taken care of for you, make sure Santa talks to you. Um, want to make sure you only have five minutes to speak with him, because he wants to speak with as many, not just little boys and girls, as many people as he possibly can. Um, also, the other things that we have going on, on December twenty-first, at both senior centers from ten AM to eleven thirty AM, we are doing the senior, uh, Christmas in a Bag, it's a drive-through event, uh, where our seniors are gonna get Christmas in a bag, uh, we have local senior, uh, businesses donating some things to our senior, uh, recreation centers, and, um, drive right through, say Merry Christmas to our senior staff, and, uh, pick up a bag of some goodies. Um, another thing that's happening, uh, we just received our wreaths, um, the other day, I will be going through those, um, tomorrow and distribute them to our senior centers, and our senior coordinators will be taking them to some of our seniors to decorate. Um, and those will be, uh, after they're decorated, uh, we'll pick them up and take them to our, some of our homebound seniors that can't get out to have some more Christmas cheer in their home. And finally, our holiday lights contest is, uh, set for, no, excuse me, December eighteenth through the twentieth. Uh, that weekend, it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we will have judges going around, uh, judging your homes to see how well you decorated, how bright, how, how festive, how creative you could be. Um, all you gotta do is send us an email at recreation@ci.dearborn-heights.mi.us to, uh, get into this contest, and once again, this is sponsored by English Gardens. So, uh, we look forward to seeing it, and, uh, uh, we will, uh, talk to you soon, thank you very much.
Public announcements out there. Okay, at this time, I will have, before I open it up to public comments, I will have Lynn read something. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, read something.
It's okay, this is in regards to public comments, and it's just a reminder that the procedure for addressing the council during the comment section of public comments shall be as follows. Any member of the public who wants to address the council shall begin doing so by stating his or her name, the street he or she lives on, and then the municipality in which he or she resides. He or she hell- shall have up to three minutes to address the council, unless the council, any member of the council, a city elected of, or appointed official, or a city employee or contractor uses part of his or her allotted time by asking a question or questions, or making a comment or comments.
I'm gonna ask you to please use the Zoom app to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, I will lower it, at that time, I will be writing down your name and go to the list in order and have you speak. Again, there is a three-minute limit, and let me get my timer up here, hold on a minute. Okay. First, we have Moby Doom, can somebody unmute him?
Hello, I want to begin by just saying, uh, thank you so much, it was great, Council. Uh, I'm so sorry, Mohammed Bay doing, Dearborn Heights, and man, six, zero, one, three, Amboy Street. Uh, gentlemen, I think of the entire council, I know this was a really hard decision amongst you all, I know that the seat is very critical during these times. Um, I do want to really thank each and every single one of you, whether if you voted for me or not, I also want to thank all the candidates who also, you know, applied for the seat, from Zoheer to Toby, to Nancy Brier, God bless you all, I respect you all. I look forward to communit- to continue to, uh, stay in these meetings, and I look forward in the next two weeks to see what happens as well. Thank you guys so much, and I'll yield the rest of my time, thank you so much, Council.
Next, we have Vince Drapkowski. Can we unmute him, please? There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's Vince Drapkowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. Um, I'm hoping for a, uh, answer to my question a couple of weeks ago regarding the golf course, yeah, what type of money it generated, and where's that money gonna go? And also, if I could get an answer from the mayor, uh, is there any type of follow-up on the E Course Creek, and what's being done? And also from the mayor, uh, have you considered hiring a grant writer, which we desperately need?
If I can re- if I can resp- response to Madam Chair to, uh, uh, two of the items, um, we are planning on putting a grant writer in the next year budget, as was suggested by Councilman Abdullah. I think it's a good suggestion, um, and then what was your other questions?
My other, my other question was concerning the golf course. Um, I was wondering what type of money this money is that it generated? And where do you plan on putting that money, and the, um, other plant, uh, question was regarding the E Course Creek.
Okay, the, the golf course. Okay, the, the golf course is uh, from an accounting term called an, it is considered an enterprise. Uh, account and enterprise fund. So consequently, the monies that are generated by the golf course would, my understanding, stay. In the enterprise um. Uh, fund and for, before there would be any transfer out. It would require a council's approval. So uh, this has been a strange year, however. For a couple of months, we gave uh, because of the COVID. We relaxed and it was with the approval of city council. The fee arrangement that we have, that we inherited from Wayne County with the operator of the golf course. So the revenues are not going to be totally reflective. Uh, one of the discussion points I had with the um, operator. And he says it's been very uh, successful has been this indoor golf. Which I am not a golfer, but he said, you know, you can put Pebble Beach or uh, some other thing in your golfing. And then he said that's been very popular and will continue to generate revenues. Um, we, we were, we had plans and ideas that we had talked to him, the Recreation Director and myself. As related to uh, outdoor dining and other events, but because of the COVID, we were not able to do that. So hopefully, with the elimination of this terrible um pandemic. Uh, we'll be able to really enhance the particular golf course and significantly increase our revenues. Uh, in regards to the E Course Creek, um, I had discussions with um. Uh, one of the Congresswomen that served the area. In fact, she is most of the South End and that's Congressman Dingle. And uh, I continue to get uh, very good positive viewpoints. As it relates to the Army Corps of Engineers uh, movement. Uh, one of the things that has kind of happened is uh, the mayor of Allen Park. Wants to get included in a lot of the project. Uh, because of the fact that Ellen Park has significant flooding problems. But right now, all of it is focused on um, the uh, the area between Telegraph and Inkster. Van Born to Dartmouth. And that is uh, in connection with that retention basin. Uh, the Army Corps of Engineers have talked very positively. They believe that project will be funded in the um. Next year's budget for the Army Corps of Engineers. And hopefully, we get construction as soon as possible. Uh, we, we track that every couple of weeks with the Congressional Office. And I want to thank publicly uh, Debbie Dingle for her efforts in that regard. And we also have uh, the other Congresswoman, Rashida Talib, who is constantly talking to Debbie Dingle. On our behalf to make sure that everything is going in the direction that it is. So it has been very positive, but it's something that we are constantly um, monitoring and lobbying for. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much. One, one last thing is uh. Concerning the golf course, you know, is it possible uh, to give the Recreation Director? And bring up uh, the possibility of getting a snow machine in there? And opening up the golf course to cross country skiing? That's uh, another uh, moneymaker that could possibly be used or. Uh, some sort of activities during the winter there. There's a lot of property that could be used.
Well, I'm, I'm not a, I'm, yeah, Mr. Hade, why don't you respond?
Yes, he's unmuted. Go ahead.
Um, that was actually brought up to me uh, recently as well. Um, I'm going to be speaking with our golf course manager and it's funny you mentioned it. Because I did send him an email today that I'd like to speak with him about that. Um, my first concerns are uh, with that is that. Cross-country skiing, uh, people skiing over our tee boxes and the putting greens. Yeah, we can block them off. So there's some ideas that we can do, but uh, it is, it is open for discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Charles Blackwell. Go ahead, please, sir.
Hi, yes, my name is Charles Blackwell, Detroit, Michigan, Wayne County. Um, I wanted to inform everyone that I filed a FOIA request for the mayor's car. As well as the records for the vehicle maintenance and fuel that he's spending going that car. So I will hope that the mayor and Christina Laslow are forthcoming and transparent. And produce those documents to the public because I believe the public would love to see those documents. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to speak about is the Kimberly Constan versus the City of Dearborn Heights uh lawsuit. Um, I believe that the council chair has a conflict of interest in that case. In which she should refrain from voting if that case results in a settlement agreement. It's because Attorney James Fett would receive attorney fees uh, funded by the city. And the council chair, however you want to slice it, would benefit directly or indirectly. And it would be a bad image. So I will hope that she will refrain from voting if that case settles in a settlement agreement. Thank you.
Well, I already decided that a long time ago. I, it is very obvious that is a conflict of interest and I would never do that. Sir, you have more time left. Did you have anything else to say? Want to make sure, are you done?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay. Um, next, I have iPhone. I'm not sure who that is. It just comes up as iPhone. And they raised their hand earlier when we unmuted them during pub- during agenda items. They didn't speak. Okay, iPhone, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me? Sam, Dearborn Heights, I'm going to talk about two different items. Number one is regarding three A. Uh, I'm not quite sure how did you enter it up. Technically, you're not supposed to end up that portion. So either we appoint somebody. If worst case scenario, you could not appoint somebody. You were supposed to ask for the clerk to schedule a time as soon as possible to get somebody appointed. And you didn't do neither. So would you like to respond to me and let me know why you did so?
Would you like to respond to that?
Uh, actually, usually I'm not supposed to respond to it, not the clerk.
Uh, she's got the answer for you.
I believe that you asked Madam Chair that it be put on the agenda for the next, the, either the next meeting or the meeting after that.
That was the way it was publicized also.
Uh, next meeting won't be till January, possibly.
Right now, it's scheduled for December twenty second, two weeks from today.
Okay. My second item is twelve A. Uh, till now, we have no clue what's happening with our Corporation Council. Uh, to my knowledge, and. Correct me if I'm wrong, I do believe we have a real estate agent who's on board and we have an attorney who's on board as well. Any contract that does not have a start and ending date will be considered a month to month contract. The contract between Gary Miyaki and the city does not have a start and an ending date on it. However, you as a council chair have agreed last council meeting to keep. Gary Miyaki as a Corporation Council till you guys will find a replacement. And now we have an item on the agenda that was brought up by a different attorney. So I'm wondering what's going on.
Council Chair.
Mosca, go ahead, please.
I, I believe the last meeting, we did not appoint.
You did not appoint Gary Miyaki, but you guys agreed to keep Gary Miyaki as a Corporation Council. Till you guys find a replacement.
That I don't remember and I'm sorry that I don't.
No need to be sorry.
I have to go back and look at the minutes.
No need to be sorry.
Sure.
As a chair, as a chair, which is, she's the person who's supposed to be approving stuff to be placed on the agenda. She should know better. Any contract that does not have a start and ending date will be considered a month to month contract. And she should have looked at that way before now. Now in the middle, with a citizen jeopardy and we don't even have a Corporation Council to represent the city as an entity. Neither you guys as a council members.
Council Chair. Well, I, I'm just gonna, because I know you mentioned as a real estate agent, I could just tell you as a real estate agent and I'm not an attorney by any stretch of the imagination. Not a legal expert by any stretch of the imagination, but I just want to tell you what I am aware of. In real estate, in contracts, it would say typically, uh, you know, from such date to such date. And then on a month to month basis, after that meeting, anybody can cancel it at that particular point. So it usually states it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's a hundred percent the legal way. But that's the way I've typically seen it, just based on my experience. So I, it, as far as attorneys, I don't know if there's any other attorneys on there. I know Robert is an attorney. Maybe they can answer that better than I can. Thank you.
Total respect to you, Mr. Abdullah, and total respect to your answer. At least you came forward and you responded to something when the council chair has not responded to neither one of my questions yet. When I got two question for her and she didn't respond for neither one of them. So I'm wondering what's going on in her mind.
Up, we move on. Next, I have uh, Councilman Moscow.
Uh, I, I just wanted to, to, to follow up with uh, Vince Tapowski there. Uh, about the golf course and doing um. Skiing there. Um, I, I don't know if that's such a good idea of, you know, skiing, uh, ruining the golf course. As far as, you know, like, I think the mayor hit the nail right on the head about people going over the tee boxes and things of that nature. And then I think uh, it would be more of a liability also if people skiing there and breaking an ankle or doing some. It's a great idea, but I don't know how it would really work out. Uh, and that's my, just wanted to voice my opinion on that. Other than that, it's a good idea, but something that we really have to be careful with. I, I don't want to see the golf course damaged in any way. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Who?
Councilman Abdullah.
So Councilman, and, and I do see your point and, and I do see also Vince's point, but you know what? What I do like, I do hope, and I'm not putting more pressure on our Director Brian Hadid. But let's start thinking outside the box, you know. Oh, I, I agree. I agree. But we just got to be careful on how we do it. That's all. Yeah, yeah, I get that. But I'm just saying, let, let's try to think outside the box. Maybe as a running track for people who want to exercise. I don't know. But you know what? Let's start having better recreation venues for, and I'm sure Councilman Muscat, you agree, and I'm sure Vince agrees. You know, let's start having more, keyword more, and better venues for all of our residents. We got to take it to the next level. Excess, take everything to the next level. City Hall Administration, everybody, us, me, all of us. Take it to the next level so we can have better and better services for our residents. But just, just straight up complacency, just keep doing the same thing over and over and over and over again, every single year is, is wrong. So hey, we have a commission. Let them study it. Let's see if this is viable. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the previous question. I'm sorry I stepped out of the room for a minute. There were two motions that were made at the November twenty fourth um, council meeting regarding the appointment of the Corporation Council. If you'd like to, I can read those now. They were approved at the minutes this week. So um, cons- council motion twenty four oh one was motioned by um, Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Abdullah. To approve the reintroduction of City Council Motion twenty one thirty one. To approve the appointment of Gary Miyaki as Corporation Council as outlined in nine C. Um, that motion was defeated. But I think it was five to one yay and the rest were no. And then there was a subsequent motion, which twenty four oh two, and that motion was made by Councilman Muscat. It was seconded by Councilman Bosie to refer item nine C, which was the appointment. Back to the administration to consider other attorneys, including Gary Miyaki for Corporation Council. And that motion was unanimously adopted. And so I hope that answers the question that was, was, was brought up.
Want to move on? I need to remind anybody, everybody, you're only allowed to speak once. I do see someone had raised their hand that already had the floor. At this time, I will move on to Zuhair Abdallah. We unmute him, please?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the votes you took. I appreciate it, whether you voted for me or you didn't. That's what democracy is about. I want to talk about, before I left the Treasury Department, on the thirteenth. Of November, a check for sixty one thousand dollars came in front of me for signature. For Plant Moran Services. I refused to sign the check because there wasn't enough document to support the expenses which they were asking. Me to pay out. I did ask Linda Vence at the time to give me copy of January eighth agreement between herself. And a plant Moran. She refused and she quit and she left. Anyway. We have copy, after I left. We got copy of the January eighth letter. Of agreement between the city and Plant Moran. And that letter dated January eighth and the one with, before it was January seventh. It was only signed by Linda Vence, coming in the city to seventy thousand dollars. Of services to fix. Many, many funds. It surprised the hell out of me that today we are asking a plant Moran to give us a price on how to fix things. When we already, the taxpayers have paid seventy thousand dollars. I don't know if the city council members are aware of this. Dave, you are absolutely right. And Bill Bezzy, you're absolutely right. Those problems has been reported since two thousand four, year after year after year, the same thing. And never got corrected except the easy one, the few ones. But the serious one where there is lots of questions about how the funds are used. In going back to the general ledger, going back to lots of papers under, you know, my control at the time. I have million questions on how seventy thousand dollars are spent without your approval. What are you guys doing? If you're sleeping on the wheel, that's a disaster. And if the mayor is doing things without you, that's a bigger disaster. I hope you do your job and he does his job. Because the taxpayers deserve to know where our money is spent. And thank you very much for everything you're doing for our city.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Laslow, Christina Laslow.
I, I, um, I was going to respond about the attorney, but I'll, um, I'll give everybody a Merry Christmas and be done.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Constan. Did you still want to speak or?
No, I'm all set. I was going to answer Sam's question, but uh, I'm all set.
Any further comments from the? Public? Okay, at this time, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
One more item, uh, Councilwoman, our Council Chair, um, that just came to me.
Public, this is.
It's a public announcement. It's a public announcement.
That's why I'm on here.
Yeah, uh, uh, just want to let you know that the VIP Car Wash on Ford Road near Inkster. Is a Toys for Tots drop off location and they are COVID uh, ready and clean and ready to go. So I just wanted to. And they are COVID ready and clean and ready to go. So I just wanted to bring that up real quick.
Yeah, I don't think of a car wash with that too or something.
Pardon me?
I thought I read something where they were donating a car wash if you donate a toy.
That I don't know, but I do know it's a Toys for, and, and I believe the owner is on and it's raising his hand. His name is Paul.
Paul's on the.
Let me get Paul on here. Let's get this correct, Paul. I don't want to, whoops.
That's where I noticed him. That's where it went.
Hello.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We are Toys for Tots drop-off. You don't even have to get out of your car. Just come to the entrance of the car wash. Go through the car wash, give the toy and with every donation, we will give you a free car wash, free exterior car wash. We have been in business, family owned, operated forty years. This was our fortieth year anniversary. We had big plans, but because of COVID, we had to cancel those. So hopefully 2021, our forty-first anniversary will be a, a big one and we'll have many celebrations. It's been an honor. It's been a pleasure. We're very thankful to serve this great city. I can't speak enough great words for this city. It's, it really is a great city. So thank you.
That's my car wash.
Okay, any other comments from the audience? At this time, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair? Um, Director, HR Director had her hand up. I don't know if she.
Okay, oh, yeah. In the future, please put the, um, use the Zoom hand, because we can't, we've got, so we've got fifty-five people in here.
Sorry.
Oh, no problem.
I did. Sorry, Elizabeth Sobota Perry, Bennett Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Just want to address item 9B. This was related to getting signatures of a contract that you approved at the last meeting. This has nothing to do with any audit or any other services. This is about providing forms to retirees and employees who receive healthcare. We have a responsibility similar to providing them W2s. We provide them 1094s, 1095s that need to be filed with the IRS. This was addressed in the bid when we did healthcare consultants in 2019. Not all the companies provided this service. There are very few companies, if any, that do this as a standalone. In fact, they often wrap this into payroll services. The reason why we have not used our payroll services is because they don't have this healthcare data. And it costs us additional money because there'd be annual maintenance fees as it relates to this. Plant Moran Benefit Group, sorry, Plant Moran Group Benefit Advisors is a separate entity from the audit team. They will provide me with a letter saying that there is no conflict of interest. And failure for the city to file these reports or these forms and to furnish them to our employees and retirees could cost the city in excess of $250,000 with the IRS. For the last five years, we've utilized the same, the same group. It's been flawless and we've had, we face no fines. So with all due respect, I'd like to put it back on the agenda for additional consideration at the next meeting. And thank you very much.
Thank you. We're still in the same meeting. I do believe we can revisit it if we want.
If you did, that would be excellent.
Council Chair.
Wait, Madam Clerk, what is your suggestion in this?
They can, the meeting's not adjourned yet.
That's what I thought.
Council Chair.
The Muscat?
I, I moved to bring the Ford item that HR Director Elizabeth Sobota Perry brought up. That was, what was that?
It's 9B, City Clerk Senior, City Council Motion 20-411. And it's 6055 backslash 6056, reporting assistance.
Whatever you said, I make a motion to reopen that. Because I wasn't aware of that myself and I thank you for that.
And allow the mayor and clerk to sign.
Okay, to allow the mayor and clerk to sign. Do we get a second on this?
Clerk to sign. I hope I get a second.
Second by Councilman Constan. Did we want to continue to discuss it or take a vote? Any discussion? Get this time, let's vote on it.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bella? Councilman Dalla?
Comment or?
Did you have a question?
Well, I just want to clarify, on 9B. On 9B, the only thing that had been missed, we had voted on it the previous time on November the 30th. And it was one nay and the rest were all a, yeses. And all that was missed in the motion at the time that was made by one of the councilmen was authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign. So when we voted on it today, it was kind of crazy to have it completely off now, opposite what we had voted before. I want to clarify that. We had approved it the first time.
At this time, did we want to, are we ready to take a vote or did somebody want to discuss it any further? Okay, let's get a vote on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Councilman Bazzi, you are muted. We can't hear your vote.
No, I still, I still vote no because I still, like I said, I vote, I couldn't do the discussion. I was muted.
Okay, did you want to discuss it? I'll open this discussion back up for you. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were muted.
Yeah, as, as I mentioned, for the last two years, you know, it was never put out for bid. And, and again, I stand by that. So we're always put in the same situation. If you don't do this, oh my God, you know, this is gonna cost us this and that. But it's still, my point is it was never brought, you know, to other bidders and and it's, it's all to us that they go out for the best bidder. So I'm still voting no on this.
Council Chair.
Muscat.
We can have a vote, but I just, you know, for the future, to, to our HR Director, put it out for bid. That way we know we're getting the best bang for our buck.
Okay, at this time, I do need to take a roll call bid because not everybody agreed. Councilman Muscat, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Councilman Constan?
Yes.
Councilman Bazzi?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Monsel had an emergency. Melonelsky Maxwell, yes, that passes. At this time, we are at the end of the meeting. Do I hear?
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
Before we go, I've got Christina Laslow. Hold on, the meeting is not done.
I apologize. I, I, Christina Laslow, Charles Road Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. I wasn't gonna say anything, but the comments that Councilman Bazzi made are false. Ms. Perry did put it out for bid and this council bid for it in 2019. She put it out for bid. I think it was September in 2019. I'm sure she can say that, but to say that it wasn't put out for bid and it's the last minute, that's not the case. So I just wanted to clear, clear up on that one. Thank you.
Okay, now we have a motion to end the meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The meeting has ended. Everyone have a good night.